How's it going, Chief?
It's going well. How are you?
I'm well, I'm well, I'm well. Thank you for, again, just giving me the time to host this with you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for having me.
Yes, so, um, you know, I just think it's best if we just get right into it, right? Start talking about you, your journey. Um, I think, you know, first, that the first thing we could talk about for sure is, let's just talk about how you started your journey, right? Um, yeah, take it from there.
Sure, yeah. Hi, everyone. My name is Chio Sei. I am a candidate running for city council in the thirty-sixth district of New York City. So that's Bed-Stuy and North Crown Heights. I never thought I would jump into politics before. Um, I think I've always been a political person. I think as a black person in this country, uh, you have to be. Um, you know, you're aware of how you're perceived, um, in, in America. I jumped into this race this summer. Uh, I didn't initially, uh, think I was going to jump into policies like I said before. But when I saw the murder of George Floyd, um, while I was in quarantine in May, uh, it did something different in me. And I think it did something different for, for everyone across the country. I think the murder of George Floyd stood out compared to, you know, many of the other, uh, uh, black brothers and sisters that we've lost, uh, to law enforcement, um, you know, throughout, you know, the, the, the history of, of the United States. But it did something different at me because, you know, there was no distraction in my life. You know, I was in quarantine. Um, I was on my phone, I was on Twitter, um, on my computer, uh, watching TV. And it was the same images and, and videos that I was seeing, um, you know, repeated over and over again. And it, it drove me mad. You know, I think it drove many people mad. And that's why we saw, um, an uproar, um, in, in, in the movement. Um, so I left my quarantine. I protested at Barclays Center. Um, you know, the police, uh, lashed out in, in violence at this nonviolent protest. I was hit with pepper spray myself. Um, and rather than that shrieking fear, um, in, in, in my actions of a protest, um, it gave me the strength and even more of a, of a passion to continue going out. So I went out to protest every single day after that. Um, I founded a, a activist nonprofit called Warriors in the Guardian. They put together many of the protests and marches and, uh, educational content that you see today, um, throughout this entire movement. Um, but as someone that was on the ground protesting, um, I knew that protesting and marching, um, would not be the only strategy that I should take in order to achieve the change that I wanted to see. Um, at the end of June, there was a magnifying glass, uh, put at our city council when it came to their vote on the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. And the city council disappointed me. Uh, my city council member disappointed me. And with that disappointment, um, I translated that disappointment into action and decided to jump into the race myself. Um, it is an open race. Um, I, I, I have this voice and I have this vision for what I need to see become a reality within my community. And I took that leap of faith and, and now I'm running for this seat.
Not only running, running as the youngest candidate ever, which is...
Yes, the youngest candidate ever in, in my district's race. Um, there are some, there is a younger candidate running in the entire city council race, but I will be the youngest city council member.
Which is amazing to me to think about. Where do you go for counsel and experience, you know, now that you're starting to step into the political atmosphere? Who do you seek and find mentorship in or find idols and that you try to reflect greatness?
Uh, you know, that's a, that's a difficult question. It's, it's because I'm a political outsider, um, and because politics is politics as we know it. People are very wary of being my friend and very wary of, you know, either endorsing or, or assisting me in, in any of my pursuits. Um, you know, this started, uh, from day one, being a hundred percent grassroots. Um, you know, everyone that is on my team that has supported this movement, um, supports it because they see my vision and they hear my voice. You know, it's hard to say, uh, what political figures have, have been, um, supportive. Ms. Lamb of World of Money has been extremely supportive, um, and, and connecting me with some people that are, uh, that have worked in municipal politics. But, you know, I'm building my own machine. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm building my own team. I'm building my own, uh, campaign. And it's been successful. You know, we're seeing the response, um, of what we've built, uh, through the eyes of our neighbors. Uh, we've out fundraised everyone in my eleven-person race. Um, I think the person that's in second place in fundraising, the establishment candidate, uh, we've outraised him by over eleven thousand dollars. Uh, we have the max amount that, that you can spend on a political campaign. We have over two hundred volunteers. So, you know, I started, I came in this race with no political connections, um, no ties to any type of establishment, whether it's a leftist establishment or the democratic establishment. Um, all I did was use my voice and shared my message. And my neighbors and my community has, has been responding well to it.
Wow, that's amazing, especially, uh, just sort of building that grassroots movement. Speaking further about the grassroots, you mentioned Warriors in the Garden. You know, where are they now? And how do you aim to stay in touch with grassroots organizations as you make your transition from the front lines to position in office?
Right, so Warriors in the Garden is currently in the process of expanding, um, you know, our capabilities and just giving back to the community. Um, we've organized a couple of coat drives and, and black business fairs within this community and in Harlem. And now we are working on, you know, buying a, a truck, uh, so that we can distribute food throughout the five boroughs. Um, and just give back to our communities. You know, protesting and marching and chanting demands is one thing. Um, but mutual aid and, and giving back to those that are the most vulnerable within our black and brown communities, um, is also part of doing the work. Um, you know, this, this fight, I, I often say this, um, but this fight against oppression and white supremacy, um, is a multifaceted one. Um, you know, protest is definitely a clear one that we see as, as one strategy in order to, um, combat that oppression. But, you know, systemic oppression, uh, exists and we need to help in every corner of our communities, uh, whether it's food injustice, whether it's, um, overpolicing, uh, whether it's underfunding our, of, of our, our, our neighborhoods agencies. Uh, we all need to do what we can, uh, to fight and help, um, where others can't fight.
Absolutely. Uh, and I think that ties beautifully into sort of like the whole purpose of your platform, right? Which is centered around these three Rs of reimagining, renewing and reinvesting. Um, so do you want to take us through those, uh, initiatives that you're working on and focusing on?
Absolutely. So there has been, you know, an evolution in my campaign. You know, as I said, I, I jumped into this race because of, of protesting and, uh, demanding a divestment from the NYPD. Um, so initially my platform, um, you know, from its, you know, initial blueprint was reimagining what public safety looks like here in, in New York City. Um, by divesting from the NYPD and reinvesting into our communities, whether it's our public schools, whether it's our public housing, whether it's community-based organizations that are actually doing the work, you know, individuals that are actually, uh, capable of helping the mentally ill, uh, actually capable of helping in domestic violence cases, actually capable of helping our houseless New Yorkers. And then I also want to renew trust, not only between the people and law enforcement, but the people and our elected officials. Because at the end of the day, we pay both of their bills. And if they're not meeting our demands and our wants and our needs, then we need to be voting them out. We need to be voting people in that will address our needs. But it's expanded further than that. You know, the general message behind my campaign is Black Lives Matter. And many people only see that in the sense of law enforcement killing our black and brown brothers and sisters and gender non-conforming. But it extends further than that. You know, as someone that grew up in District Thirty-Six, which is a predominantly black neighborhood, um, on the North Crown Heights side, uh, we are redlined in a district, you know, where we live in conditions of underfunded public housing, of conditions of underfunded healthcare systems, uh, in food deserts where there's no access to healthy foods or at least plant-based foods or at least options for it. Uh, so in a sense, you know, through systemic oppression, uh, we are dying from the second we wake up to the second we go to bed, based off of the environments that we live in. And I cannot sit well with that, especially if we live in the wealthiest city in America. The people to blame are local electors. They are not doing the job that needs to be done. You know, they are fulfilling the wishes of some of these larger donors that are putting money in their pockets. So this renewal of my campaign, this re-imagination of my campaign, this reinvestment of my campaign is a political revolution that we need to see not only in my district, but in the rest of the country and the city.
Absolutely. Uh, and that's really almost like a radical approach, right? Uh, especially with the platform that you're taking.
Interesting that, it's interesting that that's radical. You know, it's interesting that, uh, fighting and running and advocating for working people, uh, vulnerable people, houseless people, trans people. It's crazy that that's a radical thought, you know, and, and that's why, um, it takes individuals like myself and hopefully other candidates across the city and, and all offices of government to break down that, you know, narrative of it being radical, when it should just be, you know, this is the reality that we have at hand. Um, let's address the needs, um, of people that are suffering.
Absolutely. Especially, I mean, it's radical in the sense of it goes against, and it's almost anti-capitalist in that instance, right? With the systems that have been built up, you know, they're historically meant to profit, um, for the self and not necessarily send profit and value into the community. And your platform is very community-oriented, making sure that, uh, everything you stand for gives back to the people and not necessarily to yourself. Uh, and that's something that I find both refreshing, uh, and valuable for a candidate to come into office. Um, and I do hope, and I hope that you are staying in contact and finding others, other candidates who are trying to adopt similar platforms as you make your push. I would love to hear more about, um, that as well, especially in the, in regards to public safety. Because, you know, there, with the pushback of Black Lives Matter, there's obviously also the Blue Lives Matter and, uh, you know, the working families that the police, uh, force has, right? Um, that's always the argument. So how do you explain, expect to also garner support from, you know, local officers and public safety, uh, institutions, so to speak?
See, uh, I want to address the NYPD budget as something of a bloated budget. You know, there are multiple contracts that NYPD renews every single year that are unnecessary. For example, their Shot Spotter program, uh, is inefficient. You know, we can cut that out of its budget because it's not doing the work. Um, but many of the contracts that the NYPD in New York City has with the Pentagon in terms of purchasing military-grade equipment, that is unnecessary when teachers at our public schools sometimes have to pay for school supplies throughout the entire school year. You know, when we start to dive into the budget, we need individuals like myself and other hopefuls and candidates in city council, uh, to be breaking down the police budget and nitpicking, you know, parts of the budget that are inefficient. You know, we are going to be dealing with a large budget deficit when I step into office in twenty twenty-two. The coronavirus has taken a toll on our city, and we need to address individuals that are, are hurting every single day. And with that, we need to address these bloated budgets. Um, obviously, you know, many people, uh, and officers will be worried about their jobs, but many of their jobs won't be affected. It's the contracts and the renewal of these contracts that will be affected. You know, that are, are, are signed to the NYPD. Um, again, it's a bloated budget. It needs to be addressed. And we need to address issues that, that actually, uh, stop, you know, gun violence or, or why the need of the police is actually there. Why don't we address how underfunded our public education is? You know, the Department of Education is only asking for eight hundred million dollars, uh, to implement a co-curricular, um, in, uh, program throughout our city. Um, the UFT is asking for twenty million, uh, to, to improve on the programs that, uh, benefit, you know, our underprivileged or, 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 are, are underprivileged and are vulnerable New Yorkers. Um, in, in the first two weeks of the protests this summer, the NYPD spent a hundred and fifteen million dollars on overtime. You know, that doesn't sit well with me, uh, when I grew up in this neighborhood. And I know how hard it is for both the teachers and the students of our various schools here in Brooklyn. Uh, so when we start to nitpick these police budgets, um, where it's not affecting, you know, workers that are mainly of color, if they are coming from, uh, you know, a local, uh, or they live locally in the neighborhood. Um, you know, we need to nitpick the budget and show, you know, where the money is lacking and why it needs to be there so that we can actually reduce, uh, the real issue, which is gun violence.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Um, and I, and I like how you're really expressing that. It's not necessarily the jobs that are at risk. It's just the contracts, right? And the, and the inefficiencies that exist within that, that systems.
There's a contract in New York City that the police department has, and they renew every year, to armor all police vehicles. That is necessary. It's, it's extreme. I don't even have the exact number to give you right now. Um, it's definitely something that my team is working on, on finding and, and breaking down. The fact that it's not even that transparent for us to see because of how the NYPD works is also an issue. Um, but we need to fund our children. We need to fund our communities, um, because I will fail to believe that black and brown individuals are inherently violent.
You and me both, man, especially someone else who's grown up in Brooklyn and Crown Heights as well, um, and seeing the, the changes that have existed in the past decade from gentrification all the way up to, you know, what's happening with this pandemic right now. It's, 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 it's night and day, you know, with the changes that have taken place. Um, but it seems like through your course of your political career or your, your political candidacy race, you've started to expand, like you said, your, your campaign and your, uh, deepen your depth and knowledge of what happens in politics. So I, just for the other younger voters out there, right, and the youth that are watching this, could you point us and enlighten us on some ways that you researched and looked into, uh, the inner workings of politics, right? Because like you said, a lot of the things that are important to us don't seem readily transparent and easily accessible, right? And it's not, it's one thing to vote, but it's another thing to be an educated voter, right? So what are some ways that you find, you've educated yourself in your political process that you would like to pass down? Either to your younger self or to, uh, the other youth as well?
Geez, yeah, I wish it were easier to tell you how I pulled this up, but it definitely took some time and some people in my corner. And that's, you know, an issue that I do want to address. Two things, you know? Um, when I do step into office, I definitely want to implement, uh, or in work with the Department of Education to implement civics courses, you know, starting from the first year of middle school throughout all of our schools. It's insane to me that the United States, uh, stages clues across the country to implement democracy when they're not even teaching it in their own, you know, homes and own cities. Uh, so I definitely want to push for civics to be taught, um, throughout our city schools. Um, you know, the path that I got to, I guess, where I am now in terms of understanding how our city works and, you know, figuring out what policy I wanted to put forward was literally from the basics, you know? What does our city council do? Our city council delegates the entire New York City budget, which is the wealthiest city in the country. Uh, they're the legislative body of New York City, so they write local laws. Um, and they're also, uh, have jurisdiction over development, you know? So as an individual that grew up in central Brooklyn, I, you know, sat at that table and thought about what things I do want to fix. You know, overpolicing, uh, gun violence, um, uh, gentrification and, and food deserts. And that, you know, is, is affected all through our city council. It definitely took me some time to, to study up and, 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 you know, listen to some podcasts, listen to some YouTube videos and do some reading. But, you know, it all made, it's starting, it all started to make sense, you know, after I, uh, streamlined, you know, issues that I want to fix and what powers the city council has. Um, I hope I answered your question.
Oh, absolutely.
It's been a hard, it's, it's, I know it's been seven months, but, uh, you know, this past year has flown by and I'm surprised at how much I know from now since day one.
No, yeah, it, it answered it beautifully. Like you said, I, I, I do like your, uh, your take on implementing a civics course. It's like you said, again, democracy is something that we promote, but isn't something that we necessarily learn about, right?
And, and that's something that I'm trying to address during my campaign as best as I can. Yeah, I want to be a candidate that educates the voter, you know, about what's going on. Not only in my race, you know, I keep people updated on what's happening in the mayoral race. Uh, you know, we can argue and chant and demand things in the street, uh, all summer about how the police is overpolicing us. But we need to be voting in our local elections. You know, I, I can't say this enough. Um, it's important to vote in the, the national election, Biden, whatever, the US Senate, whatever. But come on, let's vote in our, 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 our city council members, you know, our borough presidents, our Manhattan and Brooklyn and Queens DAs and our mayor, so that we can see real change, uh, in front of us, um, you know, with our, our civic duties.
And change is diverse. It needs to be, it needs to have diverse representation for it to fully be realized. And I think that that's something that's extremely important, um, especially like you said, coming from a diverse community. Like Brooklyn, you know, New York being one of the most diverse cities in the world, right? Um, there, there should be no reason that we should have politics, you know, run by old, historically white men.
Exactly, exactly. We need a city that represents us, you know, and looks like us. Um, and, you know, there are fifty-one city council districts, so let's make that happen.
Absolutely. Um, and even as we look at the, I, I, as you mentioned with the Black Lives Matter movement, right? For you, it goes deeper than police brutality. It goes into like this, the way it's systemically has proven to us that black lives don't matter, right? Um, so do you want to speak more on that instance and how that, how that, how you haven't shied away from that movement and, and actually want to embrace it on a deeper level through your platform?
Well, yeah, I mean, I do have a growing, you know, population of, of white constituents or future constituents in my district. But, you know, my conversation with everyone in my district was like, we can't help everyone unless we help those that are the most marginalized. I mean, those are black and brown, uh, civilians and neighbors and, and friends. Yeah, and through my policy, through my legislation that I will be putting forward, uh, when I do step into the city council will all be about reinvestment within our district. And not just reinvestment, but communication with those that, um, will have that money in their hands. You know, where is that money going? There always needs to be a checks and balances, um, and, and goals that we need to hit. Um, so that we, we're not just throwing money at a problem, but we're, you know, laying down progressive foundations, um, that will help our communities flourish even after I'm the city council member.
Yes, absolutely. Um, and even as you're starting to grow, uh, your, your following and your base, I, I see you're sort of racking up the sponsorships left and right now.
Not, not as many as I, I'd like yet. It's, 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 I mean, we talked about, you know, uh, how I'm building my own machine. Sorry to interrupt you, um, how I'm building my own machine. But, um, this game of politics is a game of friends, and you would think it would be more about policy. But, you know, I'm getting some endorsements and I really appreciative of them. Um, but it's crazy to see some other endorsements that I'm seeking going to other people that don't have policy out yet.
Really? Oh, man. I mean, hopefully as, like you said, it'll, your voice will be loud enough that they'll have no choice but to hear. Um, and it's the, it's the, it's the grassroots that really keeps the engine spinning and the wheel turning. And so what are ways that, you know, youth voters especially can help you, right? Because the youth vote is always important, whether it's the national election or the local election. Um, I think if we get more youth, people who are younger out voting and interested and engaged in these policies, um, beyond just voting, but also volunteering, um, and staying involved with their communities, uh, we'd be better off, right? In the long run. So what are some ways that voters, the youth voters can support you right now?
Well, if you are in my district, please volunteer, uh, with my campaign. Especially if you are black or brown or a person of color, um, we would really appreciate your support. You know, you can go to my website or Instagram in order to do that. If you also live in my district, please do vote for me. But even if you don't live in my district, you know, I won't be able to get anything passed in the city council. Any progressive legislation passed in the city council, if there aren't individuals like me standing there besides me. You know, we, there are thirty-five open city council seats out of fifty-one, um, up for election this twenty-second for the Democratic primary. Look up your city council district. Look up the candidates running in that district. Do they represent your needs? Do they represent the needs of our people? Um, and if they don't, don't vote for them and support the candidate that does. It is a, it is, uh, kind of late to jump in the race, but if you, if we had this conversation in September, I would tell you to jump into the race, um, if there weren't a candidate that, that represented you. But there are some pretty good ones out there. Um, support any way you can. Um, you know, volunteering is a great way, uh, especially since we are doing a lot of text banking and phone banking these days. And, you know, get active with your mutual aid organization in your, in, in your community, uh, you know, food bank in your community. Uh, people are hungry. People need help. Um, and if you can help one person, um, you know, in your neighborhood, uh, then you are, you know, doing the most that you can or at least something.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Um, and then also, I mean, I know politics is a very tiring and exhausting game, right? Like you wake up, you're thinking about your campaign, you go to bed, you're thinking about your campaign. What do you do on your free time to just sort of relax and decompress from it all?
It's like kind of hard to say that now that we are in a pandemic. However, I jumped into this race saying, yes, this is serious, but I also want to have fun with it. You know, every other campaign that I've ever seen has bored me to death. I, prior to being in politics, I would consider myself a creative. I love art. I love music. I love fashion. So, you know, I, I intertwine that within my campaign, you know, whether it's the graphic design, the art, the colors. Um, and that's what's made this work, you know, even more fun. Um, I love talking to people, but I also love design, um, and, and, and creating something that draws attention. Um, so that's kind of a bad answer. You know, I, I, I do have personal time here and there, but, uh, I love working on this campaign. And it's really, you know, something that, uh, gives me, uh, spirit and drive every single day.
I think it's beautiful that you, you know, you never gave up your art as you started to work in politics, especially because, I mean, you as an activist yourself know, um, sometimes the most powerful forms of activism come through expressions of art, right? Um, and, and the, the way that they narrate our experiences that we live in ways that words can't express. So, um, I, I definitely do see that reflected in your campaign. Like I said, it's very refreshing, um, and valuable to me just watching someone who is almost like really the same age as me, doing, doing really big things, man, um, and, and making that happen. Has, what are some challenges that you faced throughout your campaign?
Um, I think challenges that have faced my campaign are, you know, ignorant people that only see my age rather than hearing the work that I've done, the policy and solutions that I have for this, this district. It's, you know, this ignorance that, um, I've been dealing with since I stepped into this race. But the only way that I can combat that, even if I am successful or not, um, is to just keep on doing what I'm doing. And what I'm doing is helping the community prior to stepping into office. Um, we have set up, uh, food drives and food distribution at four NYCHA residents, um, in our, our district. And we, uh, distribute food, um, you know, once a week to those four, uh, developments. Um, I have testified on multiple city council bills. I've put forward language and amendments for a sitting city council bill that affects homeowners in our district. Um, you know, I'm doing the work now. And if that's not enough, then that person wasn't going to vote for me anyways. But I will still work as hard as I can prior and when I'm in office to make their life as, as, uh, good as it can possibly be. Because I am fighting for all of us.
Snaps to that, to the fight, always snaps to the fight. Um, and, and always never forget that, you know, age is really nothing but a number. And that instance, your work will speak for itself.
Absolutely, absolutely. I wish more people thought that way, but nine times out of ten, they, well, fifty-fifty, they do and they don't.
Oh, yeah. And of course, I'm saying that because I'm also young, right? And I'm here hosting this, this experience with you. So I'm, I'm also of the mindset that, you know, there, there are things that the elder or older folks won't be able to readily recognize that, you know, have impacted me growing up.
It's, it's ridiculous because you would think, you know, people would recognize that. Some of the largest civil rights movements and, uh, social justice movements have been, um, led by the youth. You know, Fred Hampton, may he rest in peace, since it is Black History Month, is only twenty-two years old. I mean, the same age as me. Yet, when we run for office, you know, there's some people that neglect, uh, you know, history, our black history, um, and only see a number. But, you know, the only thing I can do is, is, is keep my head down, keep working, um, because I know that, that what I'm saying is true and, uh, will help, uh, the many.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, well, those are pretty much all of the questions that I had. Especially because thank you again for allowing me to share this space with you in this town hall. We'll see if there are any questions that are going to be fielded from the audience as well. But, you know, for now, I, those were every, that was everything that I specifically wanted to cover. Just for the people that are unaware, when does the city council race end and the voting start?
Yes, so the election, the election day is, is June twenty-second, uh, twenty twenty-one. I'm not sure when early voting does begin, but please vote, uh, vote for your city council member. Vote for, you know, the mayor, vote for the Brooklyn Borough President, the Manhattan Borough President, the Manhattan DA. Let's change our city for the better.
Absolutely. Uh, so one question that we have is what are the biggest misconceptions about politics?
You know, many people are right about their conceptions about politics. I won't say there's many misconceptions. I guess the biggest misconception is that an individual like myself can run and win, um, because we're going to prove both of those wrong.
Nice. Um, and then the best way to help, what is the best way to help you win? Claudia.
Claudia, you are helping so much already. Um, but please, you know, volunteer for our campaign. Um, I know it's a global pandemic, but we have our phone banking sessions twice a week. Um, it's really simple. You don't even have to use your phone to do it. Um, phone banking helps a lot. And, you know, if you follow me on Instagram or Twitter, uh, share our posts, um, share anything that I put out there. You can volunteer by going to osse2021.com/volunteer. That's O-S-S-E-two-zero-two-one dot com slash volunteer. Um, but yes, you know, share, blast my, um, social media. My social media is osse2021, O-S-S-E-two-zero-two-one. Share, like, comment. O S S E two zero two one, um, share, like, comment. And, and tell people, tell your friends in District Thirty Six that, you know, there is someone that is running to change. Uh, this failing uh dichotomy of politics as we know it. Um, and, and that's what I'm running to do, and there's a future ahead um that, that is foreseeable. So that we can, you know, help everyone um in, in our own communities.
Amazing. Uh, another question that we have is, how does your District Thirty Six differ from other, differ from others nearby?
Hmm, um, you know, it's, it's weird, we're, we're right smack in central Brooklyn. So, uh, we do have, you know, downtown Brooklyn slash Brooklyn Prospect Heights. Um, and, and Greenpoint and Williamsburg, you know, at the north of us, but we also have, you know, Flatbush and East Brooklyn, uh, southern from us. Um, but, you know, we are a, a district that is changing through gentrification, but there's still also gun violence. You know, there's still also an extreme underfunding of our, 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 our various um agencies. Um, it's a district of haves and have nots, which does reflect many neighborhoods um in New York City. But it's definitely seen now more than ever in District Thirty Six, and that's something that I will absolutely address and work on fixing. Um, so that it's a neighborhood of haves for all of us.
Thank you. Uh, and so what is great about District Thirty Six?
I think District Thirty Six is captures the essence, the, the essence of what Brooklyn is. You know, it's a melting pot of African cultures, of Caribbean cultures, of, you know, African American culture. Um, you know, we do have some newcomers that, you know, are, are great as well. Um, but, you know, it's, it's, it's one of the, the, the homes of, of hip hop. Um, it's, it's abundant with culture, um, delicious, delicious Caribbean food, um, and I'm there.
Yes, amazing. Um, another question we have is, what is the housing situation like there?
I mean, housing is, is rough here, you know, we're seeing gentrification happen in this neighborhood. Um, we're seeing development um swoop in and, and, and take the opportunity of this pandemic. Uh, and deplace, displacing people. Um, you know, there is a eviction moratorium. Um, that will last us until May, um, but we need someone that will address what will happen after that. Um, I'm running to fight for rent stabilization in this district. I'm running to reimagine U L R, the Uniform Land Use Review Procedure. Uh, so that U L R um focuses more on racial impact studies rather than the interest of the developer. You know, we think of gentrification solely being um white individuals moving into the neighborhood. Listen, I don't believe in trickle down economics, but I believe in trickle down gentrification. And it's our local elected leaders that are responsible for gentrification in our district. I mean, our city council uh has jurisdiction over development. Um, you know, I am a individual that isn't accepting any money from real estate donors. Because I understand uh that many in this district have been displaced, uh, whether through developments or through property tax increase or through rent increase. Um, and that's something that I definitely will address um and work to fight against uh when I step into office in January of twenty twenty two.
Amazing. Um, one other question we have from Josh is, uh. Well, first he says, thanks for the great conversation, but what are some of your favorite local businesses in District Thirty Six? Um, or the surrounding district that we can support?
I'm a big foodie. I, I know that sounds weird because like who isn't a big foodie who doesn't eat food? Um, Peach's Hot House is great, Zaka Cafe is delicious. The Life and Wellness Center on Tompkins Ave is great for plants and acupuncture, uh, depending on your mood. Um, Healthy Nibbles on Nostrand Ave is great. Uh, I'm trying to think of more, I mean, there's, there's so many. The Ryers sitting on, on Nostrand Ave is, is great, great food, um, great outdoor seating.
For talking about food, Pep is, uh, jerk chicken is.
Pep is great, it's not too far away from me. Um, you know, okay. There are some great businesses in this district, but we're losing a lot as well. Um, you know, that's something that I am, I'm, I'm working on right now uh to, to address. And, and, and put on, you know, notice for our current city council member, of course, he knows about it too. Uh, but our small businesses are, you know, one of the strongest backbones of a thriving District Thirty Six. So we need to protect them uh during this pandemic and after.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and, you know, dur- during your political campaign run. Uh, ob- obviously, it's been running in tandem with the pandemic, right? Uh, what are some things that you've seen on the front lines in terms of needs that need to be done for the community right now?
Hmm, it's, you know, food insecurity. Um, it's, it's, it's extremely upsetting to witness. And, you know, see every single day. Um, what has been beautiful is seeing people stand up. Um, you know, Bed-Stuy Strong, which is one of the largest mutual aid networks in central Brooklyn, has stepped to the plate. Um, they have over ten thousand volunteers that have been helping our neighbors with food insecurity. Um, I've volunteered, I've organized with Bed-Stuy Strong. Um, you know, I've set up my own constituent services that, as, as I said before, to help uh some of our neighbors that are suffering with food insecurity. And also, we need to address the vaccine issue, you know, black people, um, and the black community has uh lost trust in our government. Um, and does not have the best relationship when it comes to uh vaccines that are distributed within this country. Um, I will be hosting a forum next week on, um, you know, vaccine education and addressing uh the black community. And its, its gripes with the vaccine. Um, not only that, but we need to address the lack of accessibility of injection sites for, for the vaccine um here in the district. Um, so we're dealing with, you know, two sides of, of some, the same coin, um, when it comes to the distribution of the coronavirus vaccine.
Abs- and I think that distrust doesn't even just stop at the vaccine, right? It's almost like a distrust between um blacks and particular black people with. Uh, the government, right, and politics, we're, we're largely underrepresented. And even when we do seem to be getting a chance at representation, it almost feels like, you know, your hands are tied, right? Um, because of what happens with the, uh, you know, politics in general, right? Um, so what do you say to those who are, who mistrust taking the vaccine in particular?
You know, it's, this is a hard, this is something that I'm thinking about and definitely, you know, come by the forum that we're hosting next week. It'll be, uh, we'll have, um, you know, a doctor uh there as well as reverend in the community so that we can diversify the panel. Um, you know, it's hard to tell someone to take the vaccine. Um, you know, I think individuals are, you have your right to have your own agency, um, but I do want to, you know, address the fact that. You know, there are people dying, there are family members dying across this country, um, because of this virus. And if we have an opportunity, um, and the opportunity is a vaccine to, to slow down or halt this dangerous virus that is hurting. You know, our communities and, and our country and our city, um, that I think we should take that chance. Um, but I definitely think there needs to be more education from black people and that, from community members and community leaders. So that we can trust this um fully, so that it does not uh feel forced.
Again, I start with the grassroots movement, making sure that our communities are rallying behind this type of uh movement towards life after the pandemic. Um, so talk to us a little bit about the kind of coalition partnerships that you're going to welcome or that you would welcome.
This is the campaign that's fighting for working people, for houses people, uh, for black and brown people, for queer and trans and gender non-binary folks. Uh, this is a campaign that's fighting for all people, but especially those that are vulnerable. Because as I said before, uh, once we fight and help those that are suffering the most, we can definitely help those that, you know, are a lot more privileged. Um, so tenants as well, um, I said, working people before. Um, but, you know, individuals that, that are facing the grunt work of, of, of society, you know, our frontline workers. Um, you know, our healthcare workers, I'm fighting for you, uh, because you are holding our society up.
Thank you so much for that. Well, you heard it here, folks. It's the working class, the, the, boots on the ground, boots on the ground to get the, to get the movement going. Um, I think it also starts from both sides, right? Like, like you said, our district is one that ha- that exists with haves and have nots. And as great as to get the have nots going, obviously, that the, the allocation of resources is, is grossly disproportionate. And the, in the hands of those that have, so, um, obviously, we would also appreciate those who have the resources to help throughout as well. Um, and building that kind of partnership so that you can have the leverage to make moves the way you need to make moves, so that we can get your policies in place. Um, do you see any other candidates that have similar policies uh compared to you? Uh, as you're running this race, either in your own district or in other districts um in New York?
Yes, um, I will shout out Sandy Nurse running in District Thirty Seven, um, Crystal Hudson running in District Thirty Five. I will shout out. Let me keep it at that because I don't want to, you know, endorse. Endorsement, um, you know, I see, I would say there is a couple candidates in my district that have good ideas. However, their follow through and solution is extremely lacking, and that's what we're providing throughout this campaign, because we need real solutions uh to help our neighbors.
Yeah, this, the step-by-step process, um, making sure that it's not just about empty promises. But, um, having ways to follow through in a plan of action. And I'm assuming, obviously, there can be no Plan B, right? It's only Plan A and Plan A only, we stick to that.
Absolutely.
So how do you hope to uh persuade those who might be unwilling or have no plan? Um, to. Uh, sort of get called to action once you do step into office in January of twenty twenty two.
Hmm, I, I mean, I, I gotta keep on doing what I'm doing, and I can't, you know, get comfortable just because I want a seat. I can't not protest anymore, I can't not go to the streets anymore. Um, I need to continue doing what I'm doing, because what I'm doing right now is inspiring the many, um, and I hope that will only grow as my coalition grows.
And I'm sure the support doesn't just stop. Once you get into office, it'll have, it has to be continued, um, all the way through. Uh, so how do endorsements help you?
Uh, endorsements help with, with, with volunteers, um, endorsements help with, with covering some costs, whether it's for uh text banking costs. And, um, you know, other campaign resources, um, but they really help with, I guess, the validity of my campaign. Um, I believe that I am a valid candidate, but as I said before, there are some people that are, you know, on the fence solely because of my age. Um, but having those endorsements sometimes can, can give me that viability and, um, that, that, you know. May, uh, may convince someone that, uh, is a little wary about my, my candidacy to, to vote my way. Um, it also, you know, shows that I am a campaign, you know, some of the ones that I listed are, I am a campaign that is working uh in fighting and, and running for those that. Um, are, are vulnerable and, and suffering in our, you know, current state of society.
Yeah, and speaking of endorsements, I, I saw one of the more notable ones was Killer Mike. Um, I actually ended up having a live interview with him as well. What was that like? Uh, and how was that experience, almost, you know, being in close proximity to?
I mean, we are, we are running a very different campaign compared to any municipal election, I would say, across the entire country. Um, and it's an exciting one, and I'm proud of, of everything that we're doing, and that Killer Mike endorsement was very cool. Um, I think that's where the first council member that he's endorsed, and, you know, I love the work that he does alongside Bertie Sanders and, you know. The work he did in Atlanta uh for these senate races or these Georgia, these Georgia senate races. Um, but to have his support, um, is cool, um, because I do look up to him not only as a creative, but as a activist. Um, and someone that works closely with, with some of my, um, favorites, uh, electeds.
Thank you for that, yeah, and, uh, what are some endorsements that you're hoping to get as well as you continue this campaign? Obviously, we're right in the, the height of it, right?
Uh, community endorsements are definitely something that I want the most of, you know, whether it's every deli man. Um, you know, every reverend, which I, I probably won't get, or every bishop. Um, you know, so community endorsements are, are extremely important, and I'm working towards those. Um, and, you know, I'm hoping for the Working Families Party to endorse us. Um, and, you know, at the end of the day, those endorsements are great, but, uh, I really want to be endorsed by my community and my neighbors. And that's what we're working towards every single day.
You cannot sleep on that deli campaign, honestly, there's like.
Absolutely.
Two on every, two on every corner, so that would be an awesome.
There's like a couple of my favorite restaurants and delis in the neighborhood that do deliveries, you know, I bring by uh my Palmer's. And they put in deliveries every time it's in the district, so, you know, that endorsement is, is terrific.
It's amazing. Um, in District Thirty Six, what is voter turnout historically like? Um, and how many registered voters are there?
Um, it's honestly incredibly sad, um, in the la- in twenty seventeen, only twenty thousand people voted in the general election. Um, obvi- obviously, Carnegie was, um, you know, unopposed. Um, but we need to change that. My win number is five thousand eight hundred eighty seven. Um, I think there are over. There are definitely over a hundred thousand registered voters in this district, um, but only about, you know, twenty thousand of them do vote in these elections. Hopefully, there'll be a larger turnout rate because of this mayoral race, um, this year as well. Um, but also, we are, you know, through our, our, our ban and voter access network, um, we are tapping into those, you know, new voters. Over fifteen thousand newly registered voters registered in this district since the last presidential election. Uh, so that's where we're tapping in in terms of voter outreach.
Amazing. Wow, that's such a small number, though.
I know, it's ridiculous that, you know, only like ten percent of a population can elect someone that affects their day-to-day lives. And that's something we need to change, especially with, you know, implementing uh civics, uh, civics courses in our public schools.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so then how do you expect to reach those who are? Who are registered, but, you know, aren't historically voting in these types of, um, races, like the local elections and stuff like that?
Um, we can reach those voters through phone banking, text banking, you know, door knocking, canvassing. But, uh, I think I'm a lot more of an enticing candidate than, uh, what has existed in the past. And I think that will definitely benefit me in terms of bringing out people that, uh, have not voted in municipal elections before.
Absolutely. Um, and then, you know, like, we, we, we sort of alluded to gentrification and sort of the changing. Uh, scenery that exists in our district. Um, so what does access to capital look like for businesses as we, uh, as you started your campaign in the district locally?
Uh, well, that's a good question, you know, over forty percent of black businesses went out of business during this global pandemic, um, across the country. Um, and a reasoning, a reason to that is because our state governments and even our federal governments. Um, haven't granted grants to our black business owners. Um, not only are brick and mortar black business owners, but especially in New York, we have a decent amount of creatives and freelancers. That are still considered small businesses, uh, something that I will be working on and, um, you know, will be presenting through legislation is, you know. Easier pathway for some of our, uh, M, M W Bs, um, you know, our minority and women-owned businesses. Uh, to, to, you know, have a easier pathway for some of those grants, so that they can survive. Because we need them to survive in order for, you know, our communities to, to flourish once again. Um, I do say that we do need to spend money to make money, I know that's a cliche, but we're going to have to do that in the right places. Um, you know, in order to rebuild New York City out of this pandemic.
Spending money to make money is definitely one of the most paradoxical sayings that remain true. Um, so what do you say to voters who feel that their voice doesn't matter?
Uh, you know, I thought my voice didn't matter once, I mean, I have voted in every election that I was eligible to vote in. But, you know, I, I can see how individuals feel like elections are rigged. And I believe that too, because I, you know, paid a lot more attention to federal races. Uh, I want to tell that person to vote in the local race, you know, volunteer for a local candidate. Um, and you'll see that, you know, your vote will do something and your vote does matter, um, and your vote can change your day-to-day life.
Absolutely. Um, and then, I mean, you are young, great compared to the other candidates. Um, so obviously, that with that, yeah, youth comes a form of almost accessibility, right? So how will you be accessible, um, once you step into office and hopefully not disappear behind the walls of the, you know, municipal building?
Yeah, well, my office will always be open, um, well, not always, it won't be twenty-four seven, but I'm always eager to hear from my constituents. And even people that aren't my constituents, I will definitely have, you know, at least two people working full-time on constituent services. Um, and also, you know, I, I push this all the time, but my run is a co-governing experience. You know, no elected nor candidate has all the answers. In order for me to achieve greatness and help everyone, I need to listen and work with everyone and meet them where they are. Um, so that's something that I will be doing, um, when I step into office, and I will definitely be eager to, to learn from my constituents. And also, I'm the Gen Z candidate, reach out to me on social media, I'll respond there too.
Absolutely. Um, another question that we have is.
I do have to, I do have a ranked choice voting forum at thirty, so just flagging that.
Perfect. Um, yeah, we'll wrap it up after these next questions. Um, what are you committed to doing in your first hundred days?
Hmm, that's a good question. Um, I definitely want to expand on the one-shot deal. Um, if you go to my Instagram, you could see an animation that we just put out about it. Um, I believe that this eviction crisis will either be extended as far as it can. Um, or i- i- it's going to be affecting and evicting many people in our district, and I want to expand on the one-shot deal. Uh, which will benefit our renters, um, and even houseless people of our community. So that's the legislation that I will be putting forward. Um, also, I want to work on lowering the costs that. Um, or at least the, the cuts that tech companies take from our local eateries. Um, you know, our small businesses are going to need time to rebuild, um, you know, from this pandemic and from the loss of. Uh, of, 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 of funding and service that they've received prior to this pandemic. So we need to, uh, negotiate, um, and push the mayor to deduct, um, these cuts that, you know, DoorDash and Seamless take from our. Um, you know, our, our, our local eateries. I'm really hoping the coronavirus is at least is dressed a lot more than it is currently now, but I want to make sure that the vaccine is accessible. Um, and free for all people in my community, um, and that will be something that I'll definitely address within my first hundred days in office.
Amazing. Um, share a memorable story that you've had on the campaign trail. I mean, like you said, we, you've been in this now for seven months. Uh, what are some memories that stick with you and sort of keep you going through this?
You know, I, uh, I love, you know, knocking on people's doors, I knocked on someone's door today, I know. I knocked on someone's door today, I know this is like, maybe this is a memorable story, but, you know, and the person was like talking to me and, you know, heard my last name and was like, oh, my God, are you by chance related to Reggie O'Say, who's my late father? And I was like, yes, and he was like so happy and it made his day. He was like, yeah, I'm definitely voting for you. So, you know, interactions like that that I have with, you know, constituents within my community that either know my parents or know my grandfather, know my family since I have been in Brooklyn. And my family has been in Brooklyn for, you know, quite a bit of time, is something that does warm my soul, because, you know, I see that there are residents that are still there, Brooklyn's still alive. And, you know, they're supporting a next generation that will lead them to greatness.
Snaps to that again. So the final question for this town hall. What is ranked choice voting for those who don't know?
That's a great question. So ranked choice voting will take into effect, it's starting in the special elections. There are three special elections coming up in Queens and the Bronx. But it will definitely take into effect in the primary this year. And what it does is you'll be able to vote for up to five candidates. You'll rank them from one to five, one being the one you prefer the most, five being the one you prefer the least. And why ranked choice voting exists is so that we can actually elect an individual that receives fifty percent of the vote. So, you know, say your first choice doesn't make it past that first round of, you know, ranked choice voting and, you know, they don't hit a a larger percentage than the person above them, then they are knocked out. And, you know, that next candidate that, you know, was second to last will be ranked, you know, either first, second, or third, until, you know, there are two candidates and whichever candidate, you know, has over fifty percent of the vote will be the elected candidate. And so that, you know, we'll have electeds that really reflect, you know, the wants of the district. Even if your candidate's not your first choice, your second or third or fourth or fifth choice still have it has a chance to get elected and at least you were participating in that process to put them there.
Thank you for that breakdown. I also saw a link on your website, so for those that are still kind of confused, I want to have I have a more in-depth look at both your platform and what ranked choice voting means, as well as things like the one shot deal. Please go to ose2021.com and give it a look. It's very beautiful, very well put together and a very thorough breakdown of this platform. So, yeah, thank you, Chi, again, for this town hall. For those that are watching right now, again, this stream will be available both on the World of Money website and other social media platforms. I realize I never really introduced myself, but my name is Don. I'm a co-founder of underscore Ave, which is a creative network for people to get booking, publishing, showcasing and funding opportunities, creatives in particular. And I was also World of Money alum and a youth board representative. And she also was a World of Money alum. So, great that our paths have converged once again further down the line. And I look forward to you doing more wonderful and amazing things. And I'll leave you off to go do more of your.
Thank you so much. If anyone wants to come to that ranked choice voting, you know, forum that we are also having, you go to my Instagram and swipe up to one of the links on my story. I'll dive into ranked choice voting a lot more as well as other candidates across the city. But thank you so much for having me here. You know, I love to talk to alums from World of Money and stuff, a unique experience. And I had a great time. Thank you for all of your questions as well.
Thank you, thank you. All right.
Have a great evening, everyone.
You too.
Bye bye.